Have your attention, please. We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Thursday, September 7th, 2023. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the September 17th minutes. At the last meeting, I asked to have those continued over to tonight's meeting because Jevvy and Sinead weren't here and they were present at that meeting. So it was only myself and Allison present. So I suggested that we continue it over to tonight's meeting. At that point in time, does anybody have any corrections or comments for the July 17th minute?
Mr. Chairman, I don't. I actually went to key parts of the meeting on LTC just to refresh my memory and it seems to reflect the general discussion that took place this evening. I know it's not meant to be verbatim, so I thought it was a good representation of the meeting. With that, I'd make a motion to approve as submitted.
Motion made. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, abstain.
Okay. And the chair votes aye, so we have three in favor. So the minutes are August 21st. I know Jevvy and Sinead weren't here. It was Caleb, myself, and Allison. So I requested we continue those till the next meeting. So we'll have Caleb, myself, and Allison present. And that meeting will be two weeks from tonight, which will be July, excuse me, I mean July, I mean September 21st. So I make a motion to continue those minutes till September 21st.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that matter is approved. Moving along, tonight for our new business, the first matter we have is site plan review with special permit for 17 Byrne Street. Agro Dususa has seeked an approval to convert the existing building from a four-unit residential building to a six-unit residential building. The subject property is located in a traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the planning board per section 11.4 for the conversion of a structure with more than three dwelling units and special permit approval per section 11.3 and Article 12.1 from the planning board to convert the building to a six-unit residential building. The proposal also requires variances approvals per section 5.1 and section 6.1 from the zoning board of appeals. We did receive a letter from staff the other day. Dylan hinted to us that the applicant has requested to withdraw this application. Therefore, I'll make a motion that the applicant, that we'll, motion to withdraw without prejudice.
A second.
Motion is made. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The matter has been withdrawn. Moving along, we have a site plan review amendment to Prince Ave, one Markley Way. The Markley Group LLC has applied to the planning board for a site plan amendment to their previously approved site plan to alter the proposed parking area. The item requires site plan review per section 11.4 for the construction expansion of a parking area with more than 14 spaces or 4,000 square feet of impervious surface. May we hear from the applicant, please? Yes.
Yes, please. Good evening, folks. My name is Tony Mora. I am a civil engineer with Stantec Consulting, representing Markley Group this evening. We're here before you with a site plan amendment. Back in 2020, Markley Group was came before this board for a site plan modification to get this site plan approved. What we're here to go over tonight is an amendment to the site plan that essentially describes what we're calling Phase 1. This plan includes an addition, a large parking area, some landscaping, and the addition of Building 4, which I will point out on this plan.
Sure. Yeah. If you want, is there a microphone behind, in front of one of those desks?
I don't see any.
No, they usually are.
There's none.
No.
There's one over there.
Usually they have them at those seats, no?
Is that one anchored in?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think that works.
I'll take this one.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, usually they have them at all the other seats.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I didn't know what the setup was going to be. So, as I was saying, back in 2020, this site plan was approved by this planning board, essentially approved this parking lot layout and the addition of Building 4. What we are coming for you tonight is for an amended site plan that actually has a slightly revised parking lot layout with a little bit less parking, about 15,000 square feet more additional landscaping. And you'll see that in this version, Building 4 is no longer here. However, it's still Markley's intention to build Building 4, so we're not here to supersede one plan versus the other. What we're here to really talk about is there's no immediate need to construct Building 4. However, we do have an open order of conditions with Conservation Commission that will expire in September of 2024. And so there is some, you know, some need to try to get that permit at least closed out on the site side of things. So we were before Conservation Commission this past June to present this plan, really to kind of tell Conservation Commission that we're not intending to build Building 4 before the order of conditions expires in September of next year. But we do want to at least get the site buttoned up kind of in a nice way. And right now, we only need the parking lot that's shown currently on the site plan in the interim condition. So what we're hoping to propose tonight to the board is to present this as sort of an interim condition, a Phase 1, if you will, and sort of preserve the plan of record that's currently on file, which is this plan that has a larger parking area and Building 4 is part of the plan. We recognize that at some point, we'll have to go back to Conservation and tell them about Building 4 being added back to the plan, and we'll have to deal with that at a later date. But this is essentially the modified plan that we were hoping to get constructed before September 2024 when our Conservation Commission permit expires. We received our approval from Conservation in June, and we're here before you tonight to talk about these modifications here. So I'm happy to ask, you know, have the board have, you know, any questions, and I'll try to do my best to answer them. But it's really a pretty simple amendment. There's really not much more to go over other than that.
Thank you, sir. So do you have anybody else with you this evening to speak on behalf of the applicant or just yourself?
It's just myself.
Okay, thank you. So at this point in time, I'll turn the matter over to the public. Anybody like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? Come to the microphone, please, and give your name and address.
I can't really see that because of the positioning of the camera, but my name is Jacob Fortz and I live at 36 Iowa Street. I'm in a butter to the south. So I think maybe they've changed it from the previous time. No, I'm looking to see what you guys are doing now. That's my concern. So what they had presented to the Conservation Commission...
If you just want to turn that a little bit, if you could, Tony, so he can see it a little bit, yeah.
It's Forts, F O Forts.
Put up the one that you're proposal, and then we can always go back to what is existing. Yeah, okay. Okay, okay.
Better, yes. All right. So basically, I think they figured out from the Conservation Commission meeting, the reason why I was a little perturbed, because they tried to pull a fast one at that meeting, and they were adding something that they didn't originally have in the plans that they submitted to the City of Lowell online. I think they finally learned their lesson. Congratulations, Stantec Group. I would like to tell Teo to, you know, finally, for stop lying, because, you know, that's been going on for so long. It's really annoying, because then I have to come down here and figure out if they're going to lie again. So you see down the bottom part where, in the south part of the property, in the Conservation Commission meeting, they had put parking spaces there. They have now since taken them out. However, that doesn't preclude me being here tonight, because if you looked at the site plans that they had modified and submitted online to the planning board, if you look at those, there is a sweat path analysis for the fire trucks to go through. And there's an entrance that's at the corner of Iowa Street and Prince Ave that they are using for that. That hasn't been in any of the photos that they've had thus far. It's been in some of the plans on and off again, and we've kind of pushed back against that. But it's not in this plan, however, it is in the plans that you see online. So again, we're almost there with Stantec and Markley, but we're not quite there yet. So there's some fibbing going on here. So I need you guys to kindly consider putting conditions on what they're doing tonight to make sure that that entrance stays where it is. There's an emergency entrance that if you look where that street that was sold for $30,000 to them, that has caused a royal bottleneck in our neighborhood, that entryway. If you look to the right of that, where it enters to their property, that's the emergency entrance that's currently there. However, if you look at the plans they submitted to you online, they put it down at the corner of Prince Ave and Iowa Street. I can come over and point it out to you if you'd like.
Yes, go ahead, sir. Yeah, I remember an emergency, one in the back, it came in the other street, came in the back door. Yep.
Yeah. So if you look at the plans online, it puts an access to right here, and it was never supposed to be there. And it's been kind of like put into plans, taken out of plans, put back into plans. If you look at that sweat path analysis for tonight's meeting, which is brand new, it shows it back here again. So that's the reason why I'm here tonight, because that cannot be here. They need to stay right here where it is. From this side here, and up here, there's supposed to be as far as the plans for you guys tonight. This is supposed to have a gate, and was supposed to have one a long time ago, so that the lawn street firehouse could have access to their property. It has never been done, however, I have been assured by the fire department that they can't break the lock back there. If they do need to get into the property that way, but this should have been there a long time ago. That's really right on top of where the firehouses is, because it's right over around the corner on Lawn Street. And as you guys know, because I've been before you a thousand times about those diesel generators, you know, if you let them get an inch, they take a mile, and they've done it, because how do you think they thought there? They came before you the first time they came here, and then soon after that, they changed it. Nobody was looking, and that's all I got those for right behind you. And I've been trying for ever since about that. Uh-huh. That's in there, so I'm taking it that they plan on putting that in there? No way. Uh-huh. It stays right where it is right here. They've already pinched the parking, as you can see on Prince Ave here, by taking this land back. They can have all of this land. This was in public purview by Prince Macaroni. When Markley came to town, they took a whole bunch of land in this area here and pinched all of this parking away from Prince Ave. Now we're even having problems getting a trash truck on our street. Two weeks ago, or a week ago, we missed our trash truck delivery, because they said they couldn't get down the street because of all the parking problems. So I mean, Markley's already done enough. They were talking about making this into a parking area. They've since modified it since the Conservation Commission meeting. I do encourage you to look at the plans that they submitted there online, but then also what they actually had when they presented it. It was two different things, which is why I'm not giving up, because every time I come here or every time I look at what I see online, never matches what is actually presented. Tonight is the closest they have possibly come since they have been in town. Tonight is the closest, but I want to make sure that this is not developed any further. It stays down here where it is. If the Markley Group needs access to this, because the parking lot here shouldn't be there, they own this house right here. They bought it from the guy who used to work for Stantec. They can easily tear it down and turn it into a parking lot. You guys can obviously command them to do that, but it is very problematic that they do own that house, because the guy who owned it had a boat back here, and he couldn't make this swing, because all the land they replanted. So they just bought it off, and that was it. So that's my concern, is what they have submitted to you online. If you look at those plans, if you look especially at the sweat path one, it doesn't add up to what they're displaying here. It shows that something's here that is not here, and I don't want here. Outside of that, if they want to keep this, this is modified from what they did because of the Conservation Commission. They told me where the lines were. That is fine, the buffer zone. I mean, that's all they had herded over. But what I was really bent about, because they were facing it this way, was that they had parking back here and they've since modified that. Now, they promised, even though the guy who promised it is no longer with the Markley, they promised us, once they installed all the shrubs and everything else, that they were done. And we have been through hell with them for eight years. Done is done. Keep your damn word. I don't mean personally, but I mean Markley. I mean, keep your damn word. Your potatoes are, you know, here.
Yep, sure. He spent a few minutes, yep, yep, yep.
So I mean, it's enough, it's enough. It's like, keep your word. What's here is what's displayed is what you guys are voting on, which means that there's no entrance that's going up here and here. But if you can put that into actual like conditions for tonight's approval, that they are not to develop this corner area here, that the emergency entrance stays over here, and that, you know, if it becomes a problem with parking, they have a solution right at the end over there that they can do. But if you look it up online and the above our list, there will show up as being a company called Maxwell Properties. LLC is actually a shell company that's owned by Jeff Markley, the owners, Markley, as well as Paul Hutchings, who's their chief legal counsel.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? I'm sorry, sir. Are you done? I apologize. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't want to cut you short. I'm sorry.
My name is Nancy Forts. I live at 36 Iowa Street, and I too am concerned about them coming off on Prince Ave. The parking down there has been hideous. It's getting so, well, Jacob mentioned about the trash truck. I'm also concerned about fire trucks and emergency vehicles, because the only way to Iowa Street is through Prince Ave, and those people down there have parked hilter skilter. If Prince Ave looks great, they retired it and they tied over the railroad tracks. But now the parking, we sometimes can't even get out from the bottom of Iowa Street to get around. And right at that point, if they do an, you know, an opening there, it's going to mean more cars coming out onto Prince Ave, and it's already a mess now. Each unit down there probably has at least three cars, and it's, it's just a safety hazard all the way around. The city council is aware of this, Kim Scott, who was the counselor for the District, for District 5. And that's my concern. If that plan is the way it is, fine. But if they turn around and they say it's fluid, because this is a thing they have used in the past, their plans are fluid, and they change things, and they don't come before the board again, they just go and change something. So that is my concern, not coming out on Prince Ave, because it's already a mess there. They would take away the parking on that curb so they could put a gate there to come out. And that would be a real problem, because that would create less spaces. And Iowa Street already has a bunch of cars. They come up there as an overflow, and it just can't work. No, that's...
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn it over this time. Any questions from the board members?
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Yes, Mr. Fisher.
Mr. Mora, I guess the gentleman had a good point. I'm looking at the plans, and I can see what the concern was. We have the, this Plan 2L100, which shows the original plan with the proposed building and the exit that they were referring to. And then we show this plan here, which is 1L02, still showing, which is the, which is the sweat path analysis, which still shows the exit, but shows the new parking plan. Then we have 1L000, which is reflective of what's up here without the exit. So I guess there is some confusion between, because this, the, the fire truck sweat path analysis plan uses the proposed plan you're presenting here this evening, but it shows the exit. So the gentleman's correct. But then we have, then we go to Plan Set, again, 1L000, it's not there and it's not here. So I guess my, my suggestion is, is the intent not to have it there, and then that would be a condition that it would be as presented on Plan Set 1L000.
In general, yes, but I want to make one clarification. As I mentioned at the beginning, the intention isn't to have this plan supersede the plan of record. It's to have this sort of represent an interim condition. So to the extent that this is an interim condition, yes, that sweat path or that driveway access will not be there in the short term. However, the plan of record does have that as part of the approved plan. So it wasn't the intention that that was going to come off in the long term. Once, once the final Phase 2 plan gets constructed, the intent would be to have that access be there for fire access.
So...
But correct, in the, in the short term, again, pre, you know, between, you know, between now and September of 2024, we do not intend to construct, or Markley, I should say, does not intend to construct that access point.
I understand. So I guess Fran, a technical question. I don't believe we have an interim site plan review. So I get the intention. I understand the intention. But I believe this is the site plan that they're presenting. We approve it. They want to go back to the original. I believe they have to come back with the original before the board. Am I wrong on that?
Right. That's also my understanding, that whatever is presented tonight and is accepted as the updated site plan, as shown...
Right.
This is the site plan.
Right.
And to modify it further, even if they were to revert back to a condition in a previous site plan, you'd need a new approval.
A whole new application in, in public hearing. It's not a...
So there's no way to have essentially both plans remain as plans of record?
And just abandon one and, when you're, when you're ready to build the building.
Yeah, because the intention that we were hoping to communicate was that this is an interim condition that needs to get built sort of before our Conservation Commission permit expires next fall, next summer, I should say, in September of 2024. But we still, or I should say, Markley intends to still at some point construct the plan of record that was approved by this board back in 2020.
Well, I don't, you know, again, to the, to the chairman's point, we're just discussing here, but I guess it makes it confusing, because if you don't build it within 24 months, you'd have to come in here and get that extended. But you, you're, you're basically, this, as I understand it, this supersedes what was, you're presenting, you're presenting a new site plan to the board, and this is what we're voting on. So you can't just revert back to the other site plan when you're ready to build the building.
Understood.
So we approve this tonight as you present to us. You just can't go back and grandfather in the old one.
Before you guys actually make that motion, I, my client isn't here with me tonight, so I need to run this by him before...
We'll get to that. We still have...
This is slightly different, but theoretically, if you're asking to change the site plan,
whatever we approve tonight supersedes the past one. So you just can't say, I want this temporary plan to last me until conservation, and then we're going to go back and start working on the old plan. Well, that old plan will no longer exist, because if we approve this tonight, the old plan's gone.
Okay.
You know, you can't have it both ways. So if you want to keep it the other way, you withdraw this and it stays as it is.
All right.
If not, we approve this, then you don't have that sweet path going in or what you proposed before, because now this supersedes what was approved before. And like your Conservation expires over a period of time, our site plan regulations, if you don't have it built to a certain specs, that would expire as well. But any modification thereof supersedes the prior. I mean, it's not like you've been here twice. You've been here at least four times.
Right.
Minimum, that I can remember, going back to at least 2018.
I have a lot.
Early 2018, but at least 18, right?
It's 15.
15, probably, okay.
It's been eight years.
Yep, yeah. So, but yeah, we'll let you consult on that. But, Jevvy, go ahead.
Respectfully, could I just request a continuance to your next planning board hearing, and then between now and then, we'll, I'll get with my client and come up with a, you know, a decision as to how they want to proceed if they want to...
Let's get some more input from, from the board members. Do you have, you fill the floor, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, that was really the only comment I had, Mr. Chairman. I know they received, there's less impervious surface, there's, you know, more landscaping, it's internal within the site. You know, they received their approval from Conservation Commission. So I don't have any particular issue with, with that. But I think that's a very valid point that was, that was just brought up here. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Understood.
Caleb, any questions coming?
So my question is, I, I understand interim intention, but then what's keeping you from bringing the approved plan to the Conservation Commission? Like, what problem do they have with that?
They didn't have any problems. They approved this. I guess, you know, the, my understanding is Conservation got an initial approval back in 2018. That approval was extended three years to 2021, and then it was extended again. We only get so many extensions at Concom before the permit expires. And so that was really the impetus, you know, they have to build something before their permit expires. So that was really the impetus for this change. And because Building 4, the additional Building 4, isn't really needed, before that permit expires, that's, we went to Concom and said, well, let's build what we need right now before this permit expires. We presented it to Concom and they were on board with it. We got our approval. And, you know, now, now that it is a different site plan, we wanted to come to the planning board to make sure that you guys were okay with what we're doing in the interim phase. But again, the understanding is that we would still at some point have to come back and, you know, and build Building 4. We knew we had to go back to Concom with, you know, a revised plan that shows Building 4 when that does come to fruition down the line. We were, you know, hoping that we could maybe have, you know, both plans kind of socialized tonight and presented to the board and have, you know, keep intact the original approval while describing the interim condition. But if there's no mechanism for doing that with the planning board, we understand that. Now, I just, I'll need to go back to, you know, to the Markley Group and come up with a, you know, a decision on how they want to move forward. So...
Yeah, my take is if you, if we approve this plan, the next one, if you put an addition in the building, I don't think that would be minor modification anymore. I wouldn't, I wouldn't interpret it as such. So, so I think, I think it makes sense that you need to talk with your client to figure out.
Yeah, let's, let me, let me go back to... Yeah, let's, let me, let me go back to the, you know, to our client, we'll present the option to them, and we'll have to make a decision as to which plan to go forward with, so.
Thank you.
Any, any questions?
Request a continuance to the next...
Yeah, I just have a request for when you do come back. When you do come back, if you could submit what was previously approved and what you're approving, just so we don't have to dig through material, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's actually all in our current site plan package, so we actually...
And if you could also make it current, so that it doesn't have conflicting information, like the swept path plan on what you're submitting, that would be helpful, so that it's really clear what we're approving, what's in the plan and what's out of the plan. Thank you.
Understood.
Thank you. The only comment I have is, I agree with the gentleman who spoke first, is we did approve a gate for the emergency entrance coming in through Long Island Street, and I don't know why that hasn't been there. So I hope when you come back, that gate's there.
Yeah, the plan is to actually finish off the fence. We were putting a new fence as well, to kind of close off the, the security fence.
Yeah, because we've been told in the past that they would get to that, and I know it's been a while since the past.
Yeah, and that, that is...
And I mean, it's not a difficult thing to do. They kept telling us, well, we're constructing that, we'll get to that, we'll get to that. But, I mean, that was the original approval, to put a gate in back there. And that was what was proposed by the applicant, and we accepted that as a condition. So I'd like to see that condition fulfilled, so.
Understood.
So at this point, the applicant's requesting a continuance. Fran, I know we have a lot of things coming up. What's our next available date? I know we have quite a few things, because we've been getting quite a few emails on projects coming forward.
Next available meeting date is actually December 5th.
Oh, December 4th, right?
What was that?
December 4th.
December 5th.
December 5th?
Yes.
Jerry's looking at his notes.
Schedule says the 4th.
It's the date.
We'll look at it.
Oh, wait, sorry. That was 2022.
Yeah, here's the 4th.
Uh, so I...
I carry it with me, Fran. It's not scheduled.
It's December 4th.
Fourth, yeah.
Yeah, I know we're, we have plenty of things coming up, for sure.
December what date?
December 4th. That's the last meeting of the year.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue this matter to December 4th.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When was the hearing? I'm sorry, when was the next hearing scheduled for?
December 4th.
Next hearing would be December 4th.
There's nothing sooner than December 4th.
Every one we have is full. So what happens, you come, and you'd sit here till about 11 o'clock, and then we'd continue to December 4th, if you came sooner. Yeah. So we have everything booked up. Yeah. So we can entertain it sooner than that. Plus, we get thrown out of City Hall after a certain period of time.
Mr. Lanning, I call the person, I just add one point.
Sure.
The planking that are in that corner don't show up on that site, and we make sure they stay as well.
Okay.
They're in plank, a lot of stuff there, I think that just don't work out, but if you look at their design plans, all of that would be plank as well.
Okay. Did you hear the gentleman?
We're talking about that swept path.
Okay. 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 So December 4th? You'll be here for then, or we can go later? It's up to you.
Yeah, if that's the latest, that's the earliest we can come back, then I guess we'll accept it.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is allowed, the matter continues to December 4th. Thank you. Thank you for coming down and speaking, appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along on the agenda. Let's see. Okay, moving along, we have a site plan review in Special Permit 31 Westford Street. Joe Lee is seeking to construct a 52-unit mixed-use development at the above property. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district. The project requires site plan review approval per Section 11.4 for a property with greater than three residential units, and special permit approval per Section 11.3 in Article 12.1 for 11 or more residential units from the planning board. The proposal also requires a various approval per Section 6.1 for relief from the minimum off-street parking required, and per Section 5.1 for relief from the maximum floor aerial ratio requirement to go before the zoning board of appeals. Maybe we hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow members of the board. My name is Kevin Murphy, 1 Courthouse Lane, Chemsford, Massachusetts, and I represent Joe Lee, the petitioner, here this evening. Mr. Lee is a successful businessperson in the city of Lowell. He owns the China Star Restaurant on Outer Middlesex Street, just before the Rourke Bridge, and he owns 31 Westford Street, which is now used as a recycling plant. I really think that the legislature, when they enacted the MBTA Communities Zoning Act, had developments such as this one in mind. What we're doing is we're taking an outdated, underutilized building, and we're hoping to convert it into a mixed-use development, which would have a restaurant and a retail space on the first floor, and then on the four stories above, we will have residential housing. We believe that this is going to be a monumental change to the existing building, and it's going to be a forward-looking building, as you can see from the depictions that we have this evening. I think you're also going to be seeing these types of developments in the future when the city council approves the transportation overlay district, because there's going to be a lot of activity in this area, because it's close to the Gallagher Terminal, and it's going to provide needed housing for the city of Lowell. I really believe that this is going to be an addition to the neighborhood. First of all, there's a beautiful park right across the street from this development, Armory Park. Those dinosaurs, like myself, remember when there was an armory there. And it is now a beautiful park that is going to be redeveloped even into a more beautiful park. Also, if you have a lot of foot traffic, a lot of people living in a, in a community such as this, the surrounding businesses are going to be doing so much better. You know that there are variety stores there, and there's a 7-Eleven right at the corner, which I think will benefit from increased traffic in the area. Also, it's only one-tenth of a mile from the Gallagher Terminal. There's also a bus route right on Westford Street that could take the residents of this development to the Gallagher Terminal, and then anywhere in the city of Lowell, and anywhere between Lowell and Boston, Massachusetts via the train. It's an excellent opportunity relative to the transportation district. We have also had numerous conversations with David Bradley at the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and, believe it or not, there is sufficient parking in the Gallagher Terminal garage for residents of this development. And Mr. Bradley has represented to my coun, my client, that he would be willing to enter into the same type of arrangement that he has with the residents of the former Thondike Factory Outlet Building owned by Mr. Lapoli, that they would enter into monthly passes that they would be able to park in the garage, come out the doors right there at Chemsford Street, and walk to this, walk to this facility. I really think it's, it's a forward-looking development. You know, if you look just on the other side of the Lord Overpass, the new judicial center, it's not your typical bricks-and-mortar judicial centers that we know from the past. It's a forward-looking steel and glass facility. I think this is going to complement the judicial center and the prospects, prospects for that area of the city by having a facility such as this. I have my client here this evening that can answer any questions, I'd be willing to answer on his behalf. But I also have our engineer, Matt Hammer, who has developed the plans. We have our architect, Barry Gannick, who is the one who developed the facility. And we can answer any questions relative to impacts on transportation, impacts on traffic, and impacts on parking. I was really pleased with a lot of the comments that we got from the different departments in the city of Lowell. The Economic Development Director was 100% in favor of this proposal, and I agree with, with her, is that it's going to bring foot traffic to the area, it's going to improve the businesses around that area with the different people that will be there. The Stormwater comment, let me just say right up front, whatever the Stormwater Committee says we need to do, we'll make that a condition of the hopeful permit, that we will abide by anything that the Stormwater Committee feels that we have to abide by. And the transportation person said that they were in support of the project, they didn't see any significant impacts on traffic in the area. I thank that to the reinvention of the Lord Overpass. So I just think it's a, it's a really forward-looking development for the city of Lowell, and it's going to provide not only retail space for the city, but it's also going to provide needed housing for the city of Lowell, because this is going to be workforce housing. This is going to be housing that our teachers, our firefighters, and our police officers are going to be able to afford to continue to reside in the city of Lowell. I can represent to you that I've been working with the city manager relative to funding possibilities for this development, and he's a strong supporter of owner-occupied residences. And if we are willing to, or if we are able to work out some type of funding mechanism for this development, we're also willing to set aside a certain percentage, like 25% of the, of the development, for owner-occupied affordable housing. Because that would really be easy for us to do, because there's four levels of housing. So we actually could do a mixed use of housing at this development also. We could have some rental, and we could have some owner-occupied. So we're still working with the city manager relative to those funding opportunities. But I really think it's a, it's a forward-looking opportunity for the city of Lowell. I think that once the transportation overlay district is passed, you're going to see more developments such as this. And like I say, I think this is the poster child for the MBTA Communities Zoning Act. If you would like us to continue with the presentation relative to the engineer and our architect, I would be so inclined, or if you had questions beforehand.
Sure, if we could hear from Matt?
Yeah, okay. Mr. Hammer, if you could just...
Matt, best before we get started, we got an email this afternoon from the transportation engineer. Have you seen that?
I have.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if you have enough, just wanted you to be aware of it.
Yep, thank you.
So we got that late today, so...
Which one was that? Was that the...
That was from the transportation engineer?
Yes, correct.
It says, I don't have any major concerns of this application. I will note that the applicant cannot designate the parking spaces along Westford Street as 15-minute parking spaces without an ordinance review by the city and approved by the council.
Right, we'd have to go to the city council to approve.
I suggested a soft shine should be added on Grand Street at Westford Street, since the garage exit is onto the street. I don't know if Ting or DPW, Ting is the engineer, brought this up. The applicant should discuss the maintenance of the trees and the bumpouts. I don't have a problem with the bumpouts in general, but the catch basins being there could collect a lot of debris. So we received this on 1:00 today. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just represent that we would just comply with anything that the transportation engineer required us.
Thank you, Counselor.
Great. For the record, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So this site, as I think everyone may know, is a bottle redemption center right now. It's had multiple uses in the past, it's an older building, it's located here on the lot lines, along these, along Westford Street, in Grand Street, and along the rear lot line. The terrain actually drops down approximately eight to nine feet from Westford Street down to this portion of the building on either side. They're very consistent, it's a little steep for typical roadways. And these go down to Arch Street, and this one goes down to Marshall Street. There's a curb cut along here, off of Howard Street, that brings you access to this paved area that extends the entire length of the, of the property. There's retaining walls around the rear, there's a loading bay, fences, multiple different overhead doors, and the, the building's actually a one-story building with a full basement in it. We have Grand Street here, obviously Westford Street, Howard Street, the Armory Parks across the street, and the zoning district lines are shown on this plan as well. There's a zoning district line there that separates the UMU to the traditional multifamily along the center of Grand Street. And then in the center of Westford Street, there's a convergence of three districts. There's the traditional multifamily, traditional two-family, and the UMU district. Utilities along for all the utilities on Grand Street and Howard Street. The site, so this is going to be the proposed building for print here, along where it's existing now, and then it'll be extended along the property line here around the entire parcel will be comprised of building. With that, there is three entrances off of Westford Street to access the main foyer, which we'll go through later with the architectural drawings, an entrance to a restaurant area, and an entrance here to a restaurant or a commercial area over here. What we've done in our analysis is take the more intensive use as a restaurant in terms of providing our parking calculation analysis, which I'm going to walk through everyone through, in order to, to show the more intensive use, even though you might end up with some use that might not be intensive, but at least we have a baseline for the parking calculation with the restaurant as the, the primary use, as well as the retail space. Now, we've gotten comments related to the retail space. We can have that retail space simply be storage for, to support the, the building in terms of the, the restaurant areas, and it can also provide some mechanical room area and storage for the servicing of the residential section, which is the floor... section, which is the four stories above. There was comments related to the retail space not being ideal off of Howard Street, even though you could have like a hairdresser shop in there or something that is complementary to the residential building. But right now, we have it as a retail space, which is also a more intensive use of that area.
One question. So you're showing the basement level, right, right here?
Okay, well, I'm going to walk through that, okay? Because remember, we have essentially a nine-foot difference in grade from the front to the rear. It actually worked out nicely for the parking garage, so the parking garage entrances were predicated on that elevation difference, which then brings you to that eight-foot, nine-foot clearance in order to take vehicles in through the parking garage. Otherwise, you'd have to dip down or go up, you know, in order to get that clearance on a parking garage. This is the entrance to the parking garage, it's going to be a one-way entrance off of Howard Street, and that'll be located right here. With that entrance is also going to be an entrance to an area here where there's going to be an additional lobby in an elevator that would also provide access to that retail space. So that retail space would have its own door to Howard Street, as well as a common area lobby for the folks coming into the building, for the residential portion. And then there's an elevator shaft that comes down that meets up with that lobby that also is at the same grade as the parking garage. And there's a stairwell to get up to the upper floors, obviously. This entrance is one-way, there's going to be two handicap parking spaces that'll be directly adjacent to the elevator shaft and the lobby. There'll be one parallel space here, there's going to be five angled parking spaces here, there's going to be seven 90-degree spaces here, eight 90-degree spaces here. And then this area here is going to be a mixture of five car-share parking spaces, which is going to be new to discuss how these car-share spaces work. I actually live in a building that's similar to this building, we don't have car-sharing, but it would be great to have, because if you don't have to have a vehicle, then you can just car-share, and if it's a convenience that works for you, then that eliminates the need to have a vehicle. These car-share spaces have cars in them, everyone has an app, they reserve the car, they see if the car is available, they reserve the car, they use the car, they bring the car back, and those cars are specifically for this building, specifically. In the zoning ordinance, it allows for car-sharing upward of five cars to a maximum of 20 spaces. So we've incorporated that. This is going to be a forward-thinking building, it's going to be a building that's not common in the city, but I think the addition of that parking requirement was for this situation. There's going to be three spaces here, you come in, people have their groceries, or they need to bring something up to their units, they're going to be able to park their vehicles, three vehicles, up to three vehicles here, in order for people to just take their stuff out of their vehicle, bring it up to their residential unit, and then they get to take those vehicles away. So these vehicles, these spaces are meant to be open, only to be used for 20 minutes on those spaces, directly adjacent to the elevator shaft. We have this in a building that I live in, and it's great, we have two, we have 50, actually 50-something units in our building, and we only have two, and it works completely fine in order for that convenience, so that you don't have to worry about, you know, parking somewhere else and then trying to figure out how you're going to get your goods into your unit. And then there's a one-way out, the vehicle approaches the gate, and the gates open up, and then that allows you to go out into the street, there'll be a flashing light that'll signal that a car's going to be coming out of the garage, and then that'll inform people that are on the sidewalk that this is going to be a vehicle exiting the garage. Forgot to mention here, this is going to be gated too on the entrance, the vehicles will have a fob, so you pull up, you hit your device, the gates open, and you enter into the building, so it'll be a fully secured building. Now, the parking configuration out on the street, so with this removal of this infrastructure from the existing facility, we're able to create four new spaces here on Howard Street. Additionally, there's going to be two spaces created here on Howard Street, so there's a total of six being created here on Howard Street by the redevelopment of this property. This area out here is really important to the functioning of the building, because we wanted to make sure that you had the ability to handle the amount of activities that are going to be happening out in the building, you're going to have loading and unloading to service the restaurants, you're going to have people that are picking up their food on online delivery, that's a big amenity now that people are, you know, they want, they don't want to have to go and go pick up their takeout, they want to have a DoorDash or some sort of online delivery company pick their food up and bring it back to wherever they live, that's what this, these areas are going to be for. So before 9:00 a.m., the deliveries will happen for the building when the restaurants aren't functional. During the regular, you know, restaurant hours, this will only be 15-minute parking for DoorDash, or whatever it is that someone wants to do in terms of accessing the building. This is set up too, so you can bring in a larger vehicle in here as well for an unload, for a larger amount of supplies. What we have also done is we did some improved bumpouts to make this area safer regarding that activity with these proposed bumpouts and the landscaped islands, of which we're going to be proposing two city shade trees in those islands. Additionally, on this side of the building, up here on Grand Street, there'll be an additional four spaces created on Howard Street, on Grand Street, excuse me. The parking calculation. So I'm going to walk through the parking calculation, it's going to be a mixture of residential units. So for the residents, you have 52 units, that requires 92 total bedrooms on the first floor, restaurant, you're going to have 15,490 square feet of restaurant, and then you're going to have 2,400 square feet of retail space. Now, the residential requirement is .75 spaces per bedroom, or two spaces per dwelling unit, whichever is greater. The restaurant requirement is one space per 100 square feet, and then the retail use is one space per 900 square feet, those are the requirements, and then the zoning ordinance allows for provisions by way of special permits in order to get a reduction to those requirements, which I'm going to walk through. So for the residential parking, if you have 52 spaces, 52 dwelling units, that requires 104 spaces. Now, Section 6.1.6.6 allows for a 50% reduction when a public garage is within 1,500 feet with special permit approval, of which we are. And I'm going to walk through a traffic demand plan, which will go through some more of that in more detail. That's a special permit approval in order to get that 50% reduction to being within 1,500 feet of a parking garage. Section 6.1.5.1, car-share spaces requirements can be a four-to-one ratio with car-sharing. So we have five car-share spaces for the four-to-one ratio, we're eligible for 20 spaces to have the car-share spaces. So if you were to, so if the board were to issue those special permits on the 50% reduction in the car-share, that requirement would come to 32 spaces. Otherwise, it's 104. The restaurant parking requirement, per Section 6.1.5.5, allows for a 50% reduction, no, it allows one space per 500 square feet by special permit. And I'm going to walk through the traffic demand plan on that as well. But I just want to make sure we understand the numbers that we're talking about here. And per Section 6.1.6.6, 50% reduction in non-residential requirements when a public garage is within 1,500 feet. Our garage is within 400 feet. The restaurant requirement, if you tabulate the square footage at one space per 500 square feet by special permit, and a 50% reduction, would give you a requirement of 16 spaces. So we got 32 spaces for residential right now, if we're granted the special permit, and 16 spaces for the restaurant parking requirement if we were granted those special permits. The retail use also, the same as the restaurant parking reduction, per Section 6.1.6.6 enables a 50% reduction in the space requirement for our retail space. That would provide you with two spaces if that special permit was required, is, was granted. So if you tabulate the total, you have 32 spaces for the residential, 16 spaces for the restaurant use, and two spaces for the retail, there would be a total of 50 non-car-share spaces required in order to meet that requirement if the special permits are granted. We provide 26 spaces within the garage, so the 26 minus the 50 would be 24 spaces. Excuse me, I did the math wrong. 50 minus the 24 is 26 non, excuse me, 26 minus the 50 spaces would be 24 spaces that you would have to have dedicated spaces for the garage agreement with the Gallagher Garage Terminal to supplement that. If that wasn't supplemented by that, then we would need to get a variance from the zoning Board of Appeals for that specific parking requirement. But right now, we're not asking for a variance for that, just yet, because we're confident that with the Gallagher Garage, which is, has plenty of spaces there, that we're going to be able to meet that requirement. And then below that, I say that on this parking calculation chart, that per Section 6.1.6.5, parking requirements can be met by leasing spaces in a public garage within 1,500 feet. That's the parking calculation. While we're on that, does anyone have any question about the chart itself? Okay.
Well, I guess seeing you, you asked the question, Matt, I guess, just so I can understand, Fran, when I look at the comment letter from staff on the senior planner comments, I'm just looking at the entire section, page two, section, item number six, and it gives a lot of the explanations that Matt was talking about, but then I guess item C, I just want to make sure, it says, "The off-street parking requirement for the proposed development is 164. The applicant proposes 26 non-car-share spaces and five car-share spaces requiring 133 spaces of relief." But then Matt went through a different exercise here, I just want to understand the relationship between, right, because if I read that, I would think that they're going for variance for 133 spaces, so, but... I'm just trying to reconcile the two.
Well, but some of the reductions are special permits on our preview, right?
Well, I guess...
It's either or, or it can be combined use?
So I guess, is C, was C not, C was meant to reflect without using the reduction?
Correct.
Is that, is that what that's supposed to mean? Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that, if somebody reads that...
Right. That's correct.
Okay. So, so without any of the reductions noted in A and B, that would be the relief, and then applying A and B, I guess that would have been...
Yep.
Would have, that would have tied that up, okay. Thank you.
I know, it's, it's a lot.
Well, if somebody reads that, it's not, you know, I just want to make sure we understand.
I have one question, since we're on the parking. Attorney, do you know, when talking with LRTA, does Gallagher have off-peak hour pricing, or is always the same price?
My, my experience, it's always the same price.
Which is...
$105 a month.
Oh, no, I mean by hour, not by, by the day.
I don't have the exact, but I do take the train to Boston quite often, and it is just, it's very, very, very reasonable, but I don't, I can't answer that question for you, sorry.
Yeah, well, I always think that like for restaurants, that might be a little high if you're just going for a meal, but like, I wonder if there's, it could be something that can work out. I feel like the reduction makes sense, given the proximity, but if people are not, you know, going there because the parking is too expensive, then I don't see the rationale behind that reduction, so...
Well, that would be, that would be a great business model for the LRTA, we'll be certainly happy to talk to them about that, providing some type of, you know how they have special spaces for a restaurant or something, maybe we could talk to them about that, and a reduced price for the restaurant.
Okay, yeah, I'm just bringing it up because I always think that like...
It's a great question.
If we, if we want to consider that special permit, we want to make sure that it's a practical...
Right.
Alternative.
It's a great question, and I'll talk to Mr. Bradley about it.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, not at all, I mean, we just want to make sure that everyone understands that chart, because that chart is the more confusing part of, you know, to work through, there's just a lot going on. We have multiple uses in the building, you know, times are changing, we're seeing people, you know, would rather eat at home than go to a restaurant. We're also seeing, you know, we're seeing the new judicial center put up, which is a very short distance from here. We're expecting a lot of foot traffic during the day to service the lunchtime crowd coming from the judicial center. We're in walking distance from a very large Asian community right down the street, this is, the restaurant is going to be in... This is, the restaurant is going to be an Asian restaurant. Not that it's going to be that way forever, but we feel as though that the restaurant's going to be successful with the surrounding community around this area and the amount of foot traffic that's now being able to cycle through that area with the Lord Overpass. And we feel as though this restaurant's going to be successful without having a big parking line to service the restaurant that may peak from 11:30 to 1:00, and then it may peak from 5:30 to 7:30.
That was prompt the question, because I know if the restaurant is very successful, such as China Star, I, I know the traffic around there, then we want to make sure the parking demands are, are addressed.
Right, but the difference between the China Star and this is that you gotta, you gotta drive the China Star, right? For the most part.
People may still drive here, so I mean, at least there's a place where they were willing to park at the Gallagher, that will, that would be the best.
I'm going to show you another plan. This plan here. I'll wait for the chairman. This plan here, I don't know if, if you've, this was submitted as well, is an analysis of the entire area that shows the amount of parking that surrounds this area, and this is, this being the, the site locus here. Okay? So we've identified a significant amount of spaces in and around the area. We've identified which ones were actually reserved, and we've identified that on this chart, we've shown the distance to the garage is 412 feet. And we also feel that there's, there's a lot of spaces around the area for people to, to park as well if they, you know, need to find a parking space to go to the restaurant. So we have this to look at as well if we need to reference back to this plan. I can go through the engineering part, which is mainly sewer and water, not too interesting, but we facilitate that at the entrances. We've had.
I thought we agreed that we would comply with anything that the stormwater.
Yes.
That would be a condition of any potential permit approval, that we would comply with any of those.
Yes, I'll make it short on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
We have sewer and water, we've had meetings with the stormwater team, we've come up with a methodology on facilitating those items, and that's reflective in this plan as well. So we have utilities out in front of the site. Do you want, do you want me to go through the traffic demand plan?
Are you interested in the?
Which one?
The traffic demand plan?
Yes, I would, please.
Okay, if you could do that, thank you.
I think that's the, the biggest consideration we, I think, have to really look at.
So, the traffic demand plan is, is meant to go through all the different ways that this project will comply with amenities for the pedestrians, accessing the facility, the parking amenities, the amenities for the resident, the people in the residences, and to get an overall scope of, of the development in relation to the neighborhood. You know, we have the Cambodia Town Neighborhood Plan that was adopted by the city. We've gone through that plan to show that this plan's going to complement just about every goal in that plan. Yep, I have a copy as well, Mr. Fichat, yep. So we could go through each and every item, and I, we believe that this, this project will support that plan, as well as the meeting with the Department of Planning and Development. We've met with them on a number of occasions to go through this plan as well. We have a traffic report that was compiled by a traffic engineer that showed in summary that this project is not going to have a negative impact on the surrounding streets. And we, that, that plan was then further supported in that regard of the summary by the city's traffic engineer as well. We don't meet thresholds that would further warrant a traffic impact analysis for this I've gone through the, all the onsite parking. So we have the onsite parking, we're handling deliveries, we're handling handicap, people who are handicapped that might need those dedicated spaces. We're handling car sharing and return in regard to the special permit, and we're also handling spaces for contractors that may need to access a residential unit, and, and folks that need to unload their vehicle, their vehicles to get their goods up to their units. We've also identified loading and unloading for the restaurants to service those businesses as well. We have the nearby Gallagher Garage that's approximately 400 feet away. This is going to be a five-minute walk to get down to the train station, maybe a little bit longer, to the main entrance in order to, to get a train. We have, the LRTA goes by this site directly in front of this site. It's Route 5, goes directly in front of this site. So it's accessible by walking, it's accessible by the LRTA, and it's getting to be very, very convenient now to take an Uber or a Lyft to get to where you need to go. So we have full accessibility for those vehicles in front of the facility. We have provided bike racks within the garage. I didn't point those out. But we've dedicated a very large area here for bike racks. I can't tell you how many bikes we can put in there, but I'm going to guess we can put at least 40 bikes in this area here, probably more, we could add even more racks here. And those bikes will be secured and locked and for the use of the, the residents of the We're going to be replacing and repairing all the sidewalks around the perimeter of this building, as well as expanding and improving the sidewalks with the vegetation at the, at the loading and unloading area in front of the building as well. So there'll be a significant sidewalk improvement. We're also going to be proposing to repaint all the crosswalks and do any, any repair work to any of the handicap ramps on either side of the roadway adjacent to the facility. A lot of them have already been redone, but we can make, make any improvements to any of those handicap ramps in the direct proximity of the building. We have access to Amory Park, we have access to Clemente Park, we have access, close access to the Palin Plaza, the Boys and Girls Club on Middlesex Street, the West, the Bayon Market on Branch Street, and the Cambodian Mutual Assistance Association on School Street, to just name a few. We're within a half a mile of the wider amenities on the Lower Highlands, including Couples Square, which is a short walk in the westerly direction, down Westford Street, as well as the commercial strip on Chelmsford Street to the south. And then the, the site is also very close to the amenities of the city downtown, the Gallagher Transportation Garage, the YMCA, the South Common on Thorndike Street is a short walk from here, and the UMass Lowell South Campus, North Common and Market Basket on Fletcher Street, as well as the New Hamilton Canal is, is very close to this facility, which is just across the street on Thorndike Street. And I've gone through the bicycle storage, which is a big amenity for folks. And we have very strong public transportation accommodations surrounding this facility. The short rides for folks, if they need to, to get a ride to here from downtown Lowell, if they don't want to walk, and it'll just be a, a few dollars to get over here by an Uber if they don't feel like walking. We feel as though this project with its walkability is going to be a public benefit to the city Lowell.
Thank you.
That's the summary of the traffic demand plan.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Since you're talking a little bit about parking, I know the, the comment from the, let's see, from the transportation engineer mentions that like, you pull in your work of the city council to, to designate the parking in front for 15 minutes.
Yep.
So, so are you aware of that?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to go to the city council to get those spaces.
And then also a stop sign mentioned on Grand Street.
Yep.
Right. We'd have to go to the, there's three things we'd have to go to the city council for if this was approved. Number one would be the 15 minutes parking zone out front, the stop sign on Grand Street, and the, I hope I pronounce it correct, cantilever, the overhang on the sidewalk.
Cantilever.
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 We don't have those on my street, but we'd have to get those from the city council also.
Yeah, there would be, excuse me, there would be easements that the city has granted in the past for those overhangs that come off of the second story. So those overhangs do provide some shading on the, on the sidewalks, and it also provides some protection of the rain as well, and those are easements that have been granted in the past by the city.
Now, there's other, one other comment in here, balconies? That's not the same thing you're talking about now?
No.
Balconies?
No.
That would have to, I think there's a comment here about, they would have to go before the council as well.
The cantilevers.
Right?
I believe that's the cantilever.
Why do we?
So the cantilever and the balcony, are they the same?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Okay.
Would you like our architect to explain what a cantilever is?
Just want to make sure that they were the same, okay.
If you could do that.
Because they use the balconies, I just want to make sure, using the same terminology.
You could explain what a cantilever is and?
Yeah, as long as we know that they're both.
Could you give him the microphone? Thank you.
Good evening, Barry Gannick, Gannick Architects. We produce these designs, these renderings. I first want to say that we've been really excited about this project. You know, it is taking a underutilized site and redeveloping it into greatly more needed uses in the city, between, you know, the ground floor retail, but the housing that happens above it. And I'm not going to talk long, I'm going to talk about the building itself. While this is definitely another consequence of the, the winds of change that are coming, you know, from the courthouse area, coming all the way from downtown Dutton Street down here, this is more of investment in the city, you know, by our client that, that is warranted. And what we always find is that to really bring a revitalized urban area to the right place, you bring the people first, that apartments are built, people move in, and they can support the businesses. So we're looking, these can support the restaurants and/or retail, what ends up going at the ground floor here. It also reinforces the existing businesses on the street. I, I see it time and time again. We renovate mill buildings a lot. We've done right here in Lowell, a lot of it. And again, you know, they're dark, often scary areas. You revitalize, you put apartments in, you bring the people, and there's safety in numbers. And it's, so this is a, a step forward, this really is. And at the same time, it's a very typical type of development for the area, for the state, for the region, to build a mixed-use building with commercial on the ground floor, parking underneath, and multiple floors of residential above. This is, it'll be a standard podium building, you know, we'll build a fire-rated platform that the typical standard construction will take place on top. And it will be skinned in materials that are being widely used today. We're looking at fiber cement panels that go up, it'll be a rain screen system that is a, you know, a prominent construction type today. And it's, it's form in filling out the site is a very urban move, a standard urban move, like all the buildings downtown are built right up to the edge. We've articulated the building with the bay windows that extend over that we talked about, that we will have to go to the city council for, but it is a standard detail that historically has been used in the city. And we're showing these extend the living rooms three feet, just three feet out beyond the edge of the building. And the top floor is shown with a balcony on top of that. The balcony is not a separate structure. And the cantilever that you've asked about, we know what a cantilever is, you project out, it's supported, and, and this will provide some shading, depending on the sun angle. This is the south side right here, so there is a lot of strong sun. We will end up doing some kind of window treatment here, it's, you know, it's just a pattern of louvers of some sort that will be required, you know, for the glazed commercial spaces. But this also offers some weather protection as well as the shading. The main entry to the residential component will be recessed, again, offering some more protection, and also announcing the entrance to the building for the residential components, citizens of the building, occupants. Again, so we look at it as a great enhancement to the city, doing it in a very standard typical way of this type of development throughout the Northeast at this point, and actually across the country. Podium buildings with residential above is happening everywhere. Any questions? So this, did you have it? Basement parking, Matt's drawing is much more detailed and engineered, but the idea is that you would come Westford Street, come down Howard Street, enter here, and loop around, and exit on Grand Street here. The building core is right here so that somebody could enter off Howard Street, go into a lobby. This would be back of house, not retail space, you know, storage, mechanical, that sort of thing. But. But have access to the egress stair and the elevator core, which goes up through the building here in this area. From Westford Street, there's a main entrance for the residential component. The retail spaces would have their own entries, and those entries are pulled back from the street edge, so there is some exterior outdoor space on both sides, just giving some more open space, opens up the corner on each side. This goes up to the four levels of residential above. I'll try not to do this this time. The units ring the site and take priority for their layout, and the shape of the site is resolved in the middle, that this is currently undefined space. It would be a mix of storage, function space, and it could possibly be, and we're still working out details, a light shaft to bring daylight down into the middle. Because of the depth of the site, our units are long and narrow in order to maintain the count. We're showing bedrooms in the back that don't have an exterior wall along the street. This is legal by the building code. You bring borrowed light into those rooms, and we do them all the time in the mill buildings for exactly that reason, that the buildings are so deep that you just, you don't have enough perimeter wall, is what it comes down to. So the units ring the side, you know, some of the units do have a lot of perimeter wall, so all the bedrooms do get their own windows. But like I said, we're still working out the interior. And this would be, this plan would be repeated at each level going up, so it's very standard. It's an efficient plan in that manner, and the construction therefore should be efficient, hopefully in terms of its cost because of that. Any other questions?
I do have a question. So one elevator is enough? I'm not an architect, but I'm just wondering.
There's no requirement on the numbers, but that is something we will continue to discuss and decide if it's possible you have a two-level, one that serves just the commercial, and then one that serves only the residential, and we will finalize that.
Okay. All right, well, just asking.
No, no, it's a real question. Every time it comes up.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have questions, but we typically wait till the end, so.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
I have questions, but we typically wait to get through the presentation, so I'm just curious.
Either way, whatever you want to do. If you want to ask him directly now, that's fine.
I'll wait, because I have a question on the whole thing.
Okay. All right.
Well, thank you very much. We really think that this is a forward-looking development for the city of Lowell. It's the new Lowell. I'm really excited about it. This is an estimated $15 million investment for my client in this underutilized, little revenue-producing facility. We think it's going to be a great, great advantage for the city of Lowell, for the surrounding businesses, but more importantly, for workforce housing. We need that more than anything in the city of Lowell, and this is going to provide workforce housing. And we're willing to work with the board relative to any conditions. I've already mentioned that we would agree to any condition, that we had to get the stormwater team to, we'd have to agree with anything that the stormwater team had. I would also agree to a condition that we needed to provide written proof from the Lowell Regional Transit Authority that we had, what is the figure, 26 parking a minute? 24 spaces available at the Regional Transit Authority garage, and the other conditions that the board thought are fair and reasonable. Thank you very much. I hope you...
Thank you.
...like the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this point in time, I'll open the meeting up to the public. Anybody here like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none at this point in time. I'll turn it over to any of the board members who have any questions, comments. Mr. Fischett, do you want to go first?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Just, Matt, kind of referring to the memo from August 30th, counselor from staff, just, really, we go to page three. Regarding the landscaping, and I know in your narrative it mentions the areas surrounding the building will be landscaped with greenery to beautify the look of the lot and enhance the neighborhood. So I guess I'm just, I know you have the two trees, I know DPD was, obviously would like to see a little bit more landscaping, but I understand you're pretty much covering the site, so just trying to figure out. But I'm looking at your narrative saying the areas surrounding the building will be landscaped with greenery to beautify the look of the lot. That was in your narrative, so I'm just trying to...
Yeah, well... Probably embellishing there. I guess it was...
I thought I was missing something, so I just wanted to make sure that...
No, you're not. I guess it was partially true, we're putting in two trees. We're not going to be doing any rooftop garden on this site, so that's not going to be part of this proposal. But what I can say is that we have the Amory Park directly across the street.
Oh, understood.
I've been driven by it a number of times. It's beautiful, it's well-kept, it's got a community garden there, there's a playground, there's benches, it's fully landscaped, and we're going to be utilizing that for having that landscaping as part of this project being directly across the street.
Right.
There's not a whole lot we can do here in terms of adding any additional landscaping other than what we've provided.
Now, it's funny because the traffic engineer commented, which is kind of funny, but, and I'm just curious, Fran, if our landscape designer, and this question's come up before, where are you looking to do the bump out for the trees? Does that appear to be adequate for the trees to live, basically is, you know, the concern? Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to be...
Has it been reviewed by?
By the traffic engineer?
Well, I guess more for landscape designer as far as the appropriateness of the size of those bump outs for the trees to actually survive.
We have not looked at that.
Okay. I mean, it's easy enough to make a condition, it has to be reviewed, but I mean, that's...
Yeah, we have no, we have no problem with that.
It's come up before.
Yep.
Yeah, they have to be of a certain size to support the trees.
Right.
That is something we could look at.
Yeah, okay.
And we can incorporate it into our maintenance of our facility to, you know, it's going to be easy enough to provide some water to those trees if need be.
Right. No, but it's more or less just, they need a certain amount of space to, as they mature.
Yep.
So anyways, okay. And then, Matt, on the rideshare and the drop-off space, and this is more my not having familiarity with that, so is there going to be onsite management, or does it, is it, so I can anticipate, this is what I anticipate, somebody using a car, right, a car share, uses, there's two or three empty spots, somebody pulls in, pulls into the spot. I mean, how is that?
So I can relate to this because I do live in a building that's similar to this.
Yeah.
Doesn't have the parking, but there's temporary spaces, so everything's going to have cameras, there's going to be some policing with the cameras. If somebody's violating the rules of the building, then they'll be notified. There'll be cameras to show, and then they're going to have to comply with the rules of the building. And this is really a gated community.
Right, right.
So, you know, there's going to be some, you know, some policing that's going to need to potentially happen with people not following the rules of the building.
Now, are those assigned, or those first come, first served? How does that work for the regular parking spot? Regular parking spots?
Those would be assigned.
Assigned?
Yeah.
Okay, so certain units would have?
Yep.
Okay. So potentially, you're not sure right now whether some of those would be, whether this would be condominium ownership and some would be, some owner occupied, you mentioned some owner occupied, similar to what we did on Mermac Street across from the Jenda Credit Unit.
Exactly. We're now working with the city to try and develop a financing plan.
Yeah.
And we're looking, if we get the financing, to reserve 25% of those for owner-occupied,
And then the whole, the whole concept, we actually, further down on Grand Street and Marshall, I know we approved the whole parking and the system where the light goes.
And if, I don't know if anyone knows about the operation of the China Star itself, Jolie actually, I wouldn't call it busing, but brings people in vans to the restaurant to work that aren't actually parking at the restaurant, which is also would be a concern, right? So where do the people who work there park? And we know that he has an ongoing record of bringing employees back and forth from his restaurants.
Okay. And then, I know there's a comment, I guess this was more referring to the retail space on Howard Street that now is going to be more for storage, I guess?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Comments about having that...
We agree with the division of planning.
That's how you came to that conclusion.
Yeah, it's not very accessible that way, so we're probably going to use it for storage space.
Yeah.
That seems more logical. We'll have the restaurant accessed via Westford Street, but that coming off Howard Street doesn't make sense, so we'll probably use that for storage space.
Okay, all right. I did look at the, I actually have, although it's not, it hasn't come to the planning board yet for the public hearing under the city council, but I do have the draft MBTA Communities Bozoning Amendments, which Fran got to us this afternoon, and I did look at this, how it would apply, and it actually, I believe this would fall into what's called the MFOM zone, and then looked at the parking that applies to that, so council, I was ahead of view in your thinking on kind of how that kind of fits in. With the cantilevers, it's more of a modern look of the Surf Building on Bridge Street, which is kind of interesting, so interesting concept there. So overall, I, you know, I hope the concept works. If it doesn't work in that location, it won't work anywhere because of the proximity to the garage, so.
You're 100% correct, and that was the theory behind the MBTA Community Zoning Act, and this is part of it. I think you're 100% correct, Mr. Fischett.
For the record, I did see Rex's trailer and Bozo the Clown at the Amory Councilor as well, so...
You don't look as old as it...
Back in the day, yeah.
I used to run indoor track.
I was very young at the time, but yeah, no, I remember that building and that location, you know, so it's interesting to see the transformation.
Very historical spot.
Yeah, so, all right. And I'm going to leave the architectural questions to Sinead, because I know there were some questions there, so thank you.
Caleb, any questions?
Well, I asked mine, but on the bump out, I do have, just throw out an idea, I think, like maybe just combining them so that you actually have, I don't know how much you can afford to take one space out, but I think it would be nice if you do have a green strip like they say on one end.
Yeah, so the theory behind this is to give protection to the loading and unloading by having the islands bookend that activity. That's the mindset on that. Just because you have a lot of, you know, opening the doors, coming in and out, and we felt as though the islands, to bookend that activity was going to be a safer situation than to do something more combined.
Okay, well, I'm sure you'll work out a DVD on that one. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Sinead?
Thanks. I have a number of questions and comments. I took them as we went through the presentation, so excuse me if they're, if I jump around a little bit. I'll start, because Caleb just mentioned it with the bookend landscaped areas that you just suggested, or that are displayed in the plans. I would actually be supportive of that being an entire landscape buffer, could also handle a little bit of stormwater management onsite. I don't know if, you've talked to the city staff about that at all, but I think that would be a big streetscape improvement if that was more of a, maybe a stormwater management that's better planted out, because I think from my understanding that those, those spots aren't counting toward the overall spots anyway, it's just an improvement for the restaurant, not for the retail because there is no retail, but I don't know, is that something you'd be open to?
Those parking spaces are going to really be important to the in and out of the building in terms of the activity revolving around, you know, online deliveries, deliveries for the vehicles, people coming out to get in a vehicle, being picked up by someone, picking up somebody who lives in the residences, and...
I'm just, I'm just curious, because there's, I think, 12 other spots on the side streets, so I was just curious specifically about Westford Street, given its prominence in the city.
The problem with those streets is they're too, they're very steep, so when you park a vehicle on them, it's just...
But you're proposing parking there?
I understand, but these are, this is going to be a very high activity area out in front of the building. It's a, it's a level area, and it's where the front foyer is for the building. So the, the building faces Westford Street, everyone's going to be coming in and out of the building, out onto Westford Street there. It's the most convenient place to come out of the building, so...
Yeah, I just think it's a missed opportunity for a site and a streetscape improvement, so I can, I can leave it there, but...
One of the other things, too, is we have no problem, you know, providing some additional landscaping in the park across the street if need be. So if we can make an improvement on into Amory Park, we could also do that as well if they wanted a tree or two, or something along those lines, we could do an improvement across the street in order to improve that vast park there.
Hold on, sorry. I feel like just, it's less about improvement, but like how, I think if a little more landscape might actually help your building, that's where I'm coming at, but...
I mean, there's a possibility that we might be able to do maybe something on either side of the entrance within the sidewalk itself, but we'd have to talk to the city about that, about what they would allow in their right-of-way. We could try to work on something.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the Acre Crossing, I believe, is a good example of this, where the applicant proposed a landscaped buffer and stormwater management system like rain garden situation along Market Street, and the applicant built it and agreed to maintain it, but it was on city property, so it's a model that we've used in the past where the applicant proposes it, builds it, maintains it, but it's on city property, so I'm confident that a similar arrangement could be executed here.
Yes, we could work with DPD on trying to improve the landscaping out front. We're not opposed to it, we just want to make sure that we can get both, which is these spaces out front, and we're willing to do anything within that area out in front of the building as long as it complies with handicap accessibility in terms of the walkways and the parking and everything else, so...
Thanks. And then, another question I have is, would you be open to doing EV charging stations in the garage if it's a forward-thinking building? That's just something...
Yeah, we most certainly would be providing the accommodation and the conduits to provide electrical charging within the garage. We know that that's going to be a big amenity moving forward. So the conduits will be put in if people want to activate, and we'll put those in. We might start off with maybe four or five, and then, but we'll have the amenities to continue that along, because at the end of the day, it's not necessarily an expense for, it's, it's an amenity for the residences.
But you would put in the conduits, but not the charging stations themselves? But you would put in the conduits, but not the charging stations themselves? I'm just curious.
No, we would put a certain number in, as long as they're going to be used, and then when the demand is there to do more, we could just simply put in more, but the conduits would be there to accommodate putting the additional units in. In fact, we're doing a building in downtown Bedford now, where at the start of the project, we thought we were just going to need two or three, and then we're realizing that we're just going to put the conduit in to accommodate all of them, if the demand's there, because it's not a, it's an easy thing to do before you pour the concrete.
Yeah, I think committing to putting a couple in, I would be really in support of that. In general, I'm a little bit skeptical about the overall development of the floor plans. I'm, I really want to support this project, I think it's great, I think it's actually a great project, and adding housing and adding, adding restaurants to Westford Street in this location, I think would be great, but I, the reason I'm skeptical, one, is just looking at the overall parking plan, there's no structure shown on that lower level, and so I'm kind of curious whether you could really get in all the parking spaces that you're showing, given that there's no structure. There's also no walkways between the handicap spaces and the elevator, or a walkway between, I think, those car share spaces and the elevator, so I just feel like it's not quite complete yet, in terms of the level of development. I know it's not construction documents, probably, but I am a little skeptical about the plans themselves. I think there's also, I know you said you were changing the retail space to mechanical, or sorry, to back of house space, but I'm curious where the mechanical systems are in the building, in the basement and in the upper levels, there doesn't appear to be any right now. And then the other piece that I'm skeptical about is the borrowed light idea for the bedrooms. I think the design planners kind of hit it on the nose, that the layout, it's really maximizing the footprint of the site, but I think to the detriment of the floor plans a little bit, because I don't know if you'll get borrowed light in that central space, if it ends up being mechanical space, or you kind of left it open and vague. So those are just a few comments, maybe I'll let you respond, but.
Can I comment?
The borrowed light is a, a detail that is used over and over again. As I said, it, most beneficial in the large footprint of the old mills, because they're just so deep that there's no other way to do it. And it, it works. These units rent up very quickly, all the time. You know, and somebody, it is used as a bedroom, that second bedroom, it's often used as a study, a workroom. It is a standard type of space in multifamily design today, honestly, and I, I can show you many, many examples.
No, I, I know what it is, but I'm just, if it's borrowing light from a hallway with no windows, I'm just.
Borrowing light from?
From a hallway with no windows, because I don't see where else it would borrow natural light from.
It's true, and it's either from, we create the atrium in the middle and do it, or we do it just from the perimeter, and it's the borrowed light in the hallway within the unit itself.
Which is facing storage closets.
Yes, it's, it's reflected light, absolutely. I, I understand what you're saying.
And the middle isn't committed as an atrium space.
And the what, I'm sorry?
The middle of the building isn't committed in the plans right now as an atrium space, so that's part of the, I just feel like the development of the plans isn't quite there yet to commit to that.
But we're working on that, we're trying to convince to do certain things like that. Okay?
Another question I have is about the, there was a reference in the comments about outdoor bike parking spaces. I know that there's a number of indoor spaces, but I was just curious, I didn't see those on the plans, but I think if you could point those out.
The parking spaces outside of the building?
No, for, it said bike, I think it said bike parking outside of the building. I know that it's on the inside.
There's bike racks inside the building.
But not outside.
Not outside.
Okay, I think that was one of the comments. And then, I'm curious, Matt, maybe if you can describe the loading for the, for the restaurant itself?
Yeah, so the loading area is going to be located out in, in this area here.
On Westford Street for the restaurant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I just.
Doing off-hours, right?
What's that?
Doing off-hours.
During off-hours of the restaurant being in operation. These, these spaces are, we're going to be proposing to have dedicated to the building, so we can manage these spaces for those loading and unloading activities.
And is it, is it one restaurant?
There's two spaces.
Yeah.
That are separated with the hallway, so it could be a restaurant in a cafe.
Well, there, I'm curious, because there's one kitchen, at least in the plans.
Right.
And so, I'm curious, would there be a second kitchen in the future?
The entire, the kitchen part of it and the floor plans would have to be worked out in terms of them facilitating the two spaces, so there might be two kitchens, potentially.
Yeah, and again, this is kind of going back to some of the comments that were in the staff review, that it is a budding residential property, so I'm just curious, like, where the exhaust would be.
It's going to go out through the, the roof.
Through the roof, okay.
Yes, yeah. I don't think you're allowed to send it out.
Yeah, I was, yeah, it's just really tight.
Yep.
And then, I think that this is my last question, are there accessible units? I know there's the elevator, but I'm curious about the accessibility of the restrooms. Are there accessible residential units in the building? I know there's the elevator, but I'm curious about the restroom layouts.
Yes. Code required, we will provide what is required. It's 5% of total units, minimum. And that includes a, a site and hearing amenity unit as well.
Do you have, like, five-foot, I think you need like a five-foot floor clearance in the bathrooms?
Yes, we will be providing those.
Okay, it doesn't look, to me, right now, it doesn't look like you have it, so I was just curious.
Right, this is a typical floor plan, and at some point, the units, and they have to be distributed around the building, you can't put them all right next to each other.
Okay, thanks. It just goes back to the comments about, I just feel like, overall, what we're seeing may not be what ends up being built.
There are always details that have to be worked out, absolutely, but the building is, will be designed code compliant, 100%, because it's the only way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sinead. So I, I have one question. I know Matt spent a lot of time on the parking breakdown, so when I read the opening application, it said for the planning board, you're looking for the site plan and the section 11-4, and then for a special permit for developments with more than 11 or more dwelling units. So you mentioned special permit for the parking, so that's not coming before us? Because then it says that you're looking for a variant for the parking at the zoning board of appeals. But I thought, when you did your presentation, you indicated you weren't looking for the variants, but you're looking for the special permit. So I just want to make sure, before we vote tonight, that we have advertised for the site plan and the special permit for the amount of dwellings, and not the parking.
Correct, we, we have a, we have a meeting, Mr. Chairman, on October 12th with the Board of Appeals to get the variants from the parking regulations, but we presented those to you this evening, so that you would see that we, we do have parking available for us.
You're right, Chairman, I might have misspoke, on the special permit is granted.
No, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, no, it's granted by the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, not a problem, no problem at all.
Apologize for that.
Go ahead, Joe.
So I just get a clarification, because under the zoning ordinance, under section 6.1.6, item number six, which is what's referred to even in the comments, regarding the 50% reduction, it says, I'll read the last section of this, this is if a publicly-owned off-street parking facility is located within 1,500 feet of the entrance to the use of the special, to the use by special permit, if the planning board finds that the said public parking will accommodate the parking demands of the pro, proposed project. So, you know, I, I see that as that special permit, the planning board's the granting authority of that special permit, but that it wasn't posted for that special permit. So I guess that's.
But Fran, can they still get the variance for that, for the parking?
Yes, we're going to. On October 12th, we're going for the variance.
Yeah, okay.
But, okay, so, under the special, under the requirements of the special permit, but they didn't come to us for the, so we won't be voting on the parking?
No.
Correct.
All right, all right.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure we understand what we're all voting.
Thank you very much.
So basically, they had the choice to come before us for the special permit under the parking, I'll go for the variance from the ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
I think this is, okay.
And in that case, they're looking for relief for 133 units? That's where your relief comes in.
My question is, can they do both if they?
Well, they didn't get posted that way.
Yeah, I know.
They didn't request.
Would you consider, would you consider adding those regulations in as a approval by the planning board, that those regulations would apply to this development? The two regulations we talked about, the car share and the proximity to the parking garage, is that those regulations, you're approving them, that they, as they apply to this development?
I mean, I don't, I guess, I don't know, it wasn't, it wasn't posted, I, I understand, council, I guess, I guess what you're indicating is that it would, some sort of a condition saying that you, you comply with section.
Right.
I see, but not issuing the.
The variance, you're not.
Special permit, because as I mentioned to Fran, and that goes back to the letter with, I was trying to figure out at the beginning, if it's, then, then you're seeking relief, not the special permit, then you're seeking relief for 133 parking spots at the zoning board of appeals.
Correct, correct.
See, that's where, that's where there was a mismatch with.
Okay, right.
With what was being presented and what was in, it all kind of fell in line, yeah.
Right. All we're asking then is that you, you agree that those two regulations apply to this development? You're not granting a variance from the parking requirements.
Right.
Just saying that these regulations apply to this development.
And, and we're not approving it as a special permit item, it's just, just that, you agree to comply with what that is, and we put it in there as a condition?
Yeah. I guess, we could address it under a site plan, because on the site plan, we have to look at parking, so we could say, if we approve the application for the site plan, we could indicate that one of the reasons we approve in the site plan is because we're satisfied with the car share and the, and the proximity to the parking garage, that helps.
In the 50% reduction.
Yeah, in the 50%, so I mean, we can. We can, we can.
What's that?
Mention that as part of the, the reason for approval of the site plan, without giving the special permit. Yeah, so I mean.
That would be great.
I mean, if we address it under the site plan, we're not giving the special permit relief, but we can say, we have approved in the site plan, which we, you know, we have to consider the parking.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, you know, if we approve the site plan, we can say, because we're satisfied with the parking calculations as submitted by the applicant, especially as it's referred to the car share, the parking garage, and the 50% reduction.
That would be terrific, thank you.
Yeah, I would phrase that, Mr. Chairman, as, as, as a condition, then, that they comply with section 6.1.6 and 6.5, because it's not a comment, right? I mean, we're, we're making conditions, we're not.
Okay, sure, so we can, so, well, those two specify those two conditions.
Right.
Right, Matt, that, that would meet your calculation.
Yep.
Those are the only questions I had, I think everything else has been answered, as we've learned along, but that was the only matter I had for clarification, so. So basically, what's requested the board for a site plan and the special permit for the amount of dwelling units over 11, so we need the, the site plan first.
I do have one question.
Sure.
Now, I understand Sinead, Sinead have talked a little bit about architecture, and now I understand, site plan mostly pertains to the outside elements, so can we condition the outside to stay what it is while the inside, I, you know, changes, or stay, is it, is it fair, or, I mean?
Well, under the special permit, we would put that under the special permit, that would be the purview of the special permit, yeah.
Yeah. So, so that the facade, I suppose we're expecting to see something closely resemble what you presented, while the inside may change slightly. Slightly, yeah.
Oh, exactly, yes, that, the exterior facade, that is what it's going to be, yes.
Okay. Just thought of it, so how about lighting? I know we didn't discuss lighting, exterior lighting.
So the only exterior lighting would be wall sconces on the entrance.
Okay.
And there'll be a, a wall sconce on the entrance off of Howard Street.
The, the secondary entrance.
Yep.
Okay.
Just accent lighting.
All right.
For those entrances.
And one other question, Matt, what are you going to do with the trash pickup?
It'll all be interior.
Interior?
Yep.
I had that on my list, yeah.
And that's what we utilize, that storage area with the retail spaces, we'll turn that into a, a trash receptacle in there.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need a motion, usually we do the site plan first, then the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that the, the applicant will install a stop sign at the, on Grand Street, at Westford Street, since the garage exit is on that street. The, the applicant will seek city council approval on the 15-minute parking. The applicant will seek city council approval for the approval of the cantilevers, and the applicant will seek approval from the city council for the installation of the street trees.
In stop sign.
In stop sign, which I think we had covered that, on Grand Street and Westford, that was the first, right? The applicant will work with DPD to finalize a landscaping plan, a plan to enhance the facade of the building. The applicant will adhere to section 6.1.6 relative to the reduction of the non-residential parking, and the applicant will adhere to section 6.5 relative to car share parking spaces. The applicant will comply with, after they get the permit anyways, but stormwater management and the comments by the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility Staff Engineer. And I think, Mr. Chairman, for site plan, that would be all I have, I know, and then we would incorporate, I think, Caleb's comments relative to special permits. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and the applicant will also provide a parking agreement with the, is it, is it, what is the parking, the Gallagher?
It's, yeah, it would be with the Lowell Regional.
Lowell Regional Transit Authority?
Yeah. For a minimum of 26 parking spaces?
Minimum of 26 parking spaces, yeah, perfect.
So Jerry, I understand you mentioned on part, the 50% reduction on residential parking, is there another one for the residential parking? Is there another provision to do the exact same thing? Because I. Because I remember from your chart, or I can look at the zoning ordinance, too.
So, so, so on that one, it's...
And it was 6.1.6 for the non-residential parking, right?
Right.
Yes, so that's, it's a 50% reduction by six, being within 1,500 feet of a parking garage.
Is it the same provision for residential parking or multifamily parking?
Yes, it's 6.1.6.6.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you covered it, Jerry, 6.1.6?
Yeah, so hold on. District, the non-residential park requirements are reduced 50% in about 600 feet into the, residential parking may be reduced as much as 50% public off-street. It's all covered under Section 6.1.6. Yeah. So, I just read the first line, actually, but yeah, it's all covered under Section 6.1.6. Still, it's a little good question, though.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second or a discussion?
I'll second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair, vote yes. So the site plan approval is approved, four in favor and none against. Now we have a request for the special permit for more than 11 residential units on one slide.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special permit incorporating all of the conditions from the site plan and to also add the condition that the, the architectural plans submitted at the, at this hearing reflecting the, the facade and the architectural design of the buildings shall not be altered as presented and approved by the board. Well, I think, yeah, I think that would be more, I, so I, just sidebar conversation the Chairman and I are having, is Sinead had a good point relative to the, the drawings of the parking arrangement under the building. There's no columns, there's no, I mean, are you going to really get that kind of parking out of it? If you don't, by the way, you don't get that many, that much parking, what I just read doesn't actually fit your formula. So obviously, if that's going to be altered, that's going to be, require you to come, come back here. So I guess, I mean, I guess that would be the protection at the end of the day, right? So I mean, if, if, in fact, you have to eliminate some parking spaces and you can't comply with, with that.
That's, that's, that's fine. We do have wiggle room down there for space. We're not going to get an additional space, but we have wiggle room to move things around to make sure that everything's code compliant, as the architect said, so.
Right. But I mean, I, I don't think unless anybody, I feel comfortable in the sense that we've incorporated that they're, they're applying, we made, we made a conditional that you have to comply with the reduction in the parking as, as laid out here, and I don't think you gives you any, you don't have any... Are there any spots to give up? I think you meet the minimum, right, as far as...
Yeah, no, let's say we ended up losing two spaces.
Then you'd have to have 28, 28 from the regional authority.
Right.
So you'd have to meet the, so I guess staff could determine that?
Yeah, and the, and the building commissioner is going to have to ensure that the permit coincides with the use to be compliant. So, again, you might, the parking could get skewed even by the, the use of the, the main level as well.
Right.
So, at, at the end of the day, it's going to be the building commissioner that determines whether the building permit is going to be issued for the use related to the parking as it relates to the permits that were issued.
Well, yeah, there's two different things going on there. I mean, there's still, staff would have to look at what's been built and, and determine if that met the plans.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if there was two spaces lost, let's say, because of column...
You could make it up.
You could make it, you could make it up in the garage, because it's within the 1,500.
Yeah, and they'd have to make sure those calculations comply with. So I, I'm comfortable with that. I don't, I don't think there's any other way to adjust for that, but...
So we have the motion on the floor that, at this time, for the special permit.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Chair, vote yes. Anybody in opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries, four in favor and none against. Good luck and wish you well.
Good luck. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. We really appreciate that. I think this is going to be an exciting project, definitely.
You know, we just approved a project that has a little different design, but it kind of borders kind of like that, three or four yards down on the right of Amory Park. Remember when Attorney Gary brought in?
Yep.
It's right across the street from those brown tones, and they kept saying, well, this is the new state of the art you got to look at. We kept looking at it like, I don't know if it fits in, so we...
We modified that. That was a little...
Yeah, so we modified it, but it, when you start looking at that, start looking at the one down the street, it's going to change some of that neighborhood concept there.
Yeah.
But...
So it's changing, as it always has, right?
It took a little while to convince us, like, I was bumping out, and so they did a few things around the edges and the top design, and, but I think it'll come out nice and long, right? So we wish you well on this one as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Good luck. You're welcome. Good luck there. I wish you well. Okay. So moving along on the agenda, do we have any other businesses? Are there any further comments from board members? So I guess I have one. Last Monday night, Jerry and I attended the City Council Planning Board, I mean, City Council meeting on ADUs. Where we were invited and it was, it was a very lengthy meeting. It went to 10 o'clock before we finished, right on the button, basically. But, so basically, they made a lot of motions to amend the ordinance as written, and I believe what the final indication was, they were sending things back to the Law Department for clarification on a few things, one being ownership, because the question came up with a trust, what the ownership is, who owns it, and only one owner. And a couple of them were to look at the ordinance that was drafted in Salem and to see if they could do lower income was one, and there's another one, Chair, vote the home rule petition.
For the, yeah, for the, the tax, for some sort of a tax break, yep.
And so I guess basically, it was referred back to Law Department, they're going to answer some questions, then referred back to the City Council, and I believe the City Council will have another public hearing on it, and then they'll vote to adopt, deny the ADUs as presented with all the, with all the new comments. One of the, one of the motions that was made by the mayor and approved by the council was anything under 7,000 square feet had to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit. Where before, none of that, that was in the language of basically, I know when we had discussion before this board, it was basically any size zone, I mean, any size lot, so, and there's, the city solicitor was there, as well as the assistant city solicitor, and they came back and were informed by Attorney McKenna that they are allowed to, they put a condition in before to have five ADUs per district, and he didn't know if that was legal. He looked into it and came back and said it was. So that was a motion that was made at a previous meeting, and by clarification from the Law Department, said that was so, and also, there was a motion basically called, in a way, a sunset clause, to take another look at the ADUs when, after a year's period of time, when, I think it says, after a year, or up to 16 units?
Correct, yes.
Up to 16, yeah. So they did a lot of things, a lot of amendments to it, and I anticipate when they come back to the public hearing, there might be some more. But, so there was a lengthy discussion, as we know, was the first time, second time. I continue to see, it continued to go forward, but I think there was a great deal of compromise that was made. So I'm sure we'll be seeing the final outcome, but if anything goes through with the special permit, they'll all be going before the ZBAs, so they won't be coming before the planning board. One of the motions that was passed at the first meeting of the council, at a regular meeting, not the special meeting, was that all detached ADUs had to go before the ZBA for a special permit. So now the detached needs a special permit, and anything under 7,000 needs a special permit, which is a big adjustment to come that far. And now they put a limit on it and have a sunset clause to look at it. And then they had a few other matters that were going to be addressed, so. That's my only comment as a result of attending the council with the vice chair. Any other board members have any comments? If not, we can adjourn the motion to adjourn.
I just have a, I have an update from the Community Preservation Committee. The eligibility forms were due today for CPC funding, and so I believe we'll be reviewing them in, at our meeting in two weeks. For the eligibility, and then for the full applications are due on October 13th. So we're starting that cycle. We haven't met in a few months at this point.
So I saw the advertisement in the paper the other day, where you, that your preservation committee is meeting the same night as the planning board, and they're both meeting in the City Council chambers.
So Sinead could attend both.
Yeah, both two weeks from tonight. That's it.
I'm trying to figure out why we're meeting on a Thursday.
So I called Dylan up when I saw it. I said, Dylan, I'm meeting both of these. And he said, oh, one of them's going to be in the mayor's reception room.
Yeah, okay.
But that's going to be the preservation one, so, but they're both advertised for the same night, Sinead, so.
Tom, was the Monday a day that you typically have a conference?
I'm sorry?
The Monday of, in two weeks from, two weeks from today, don't you typically go to a conference that day? Or not anymore?
Oh, the conference I go to would have been the Monday, but I'll be here that Thursday.
Exactly, so that's why the planning board meeting is the Thursday, because Tom's going to a conference on the Monday.
Monday, I'm gone, right, yeah. And that's what we adjusted last year when we asked, what to vote with or without. Yeah, so, yeah, so that Thursday night, there's both those meetings, one there and one here, so.
Then you've got to choose.
Yeah.
It's possible I won't be available for either, but I'll let you know when I figure that out.
That's okay. If we need a vote, we'll run down to Hall and get you. You can stay in the hall, I guess. We had that at Nemco one time, someone called in for the call, and it was before Zoom. So any other comments? If not, we can adjourn the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Motion made?
Seconded.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair, vote yes. We have adjourned. Good night, thank you everyone.